All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If everybody would please rise and bow their heads for prayer. Dear Lord, we pray for your blessings upon everyone gathered here today and on every person, family, and business in our community. We, the elected leaders of our city, thank you, Lord, for allowing us the privilege to serve our citizens. Grant us the wisdom to make decisions that will keep our community safe and prosperous. Amen. Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Here.
All right. Okay, public comment on agenda items.
I guess I'm the only one. Ron George from Little Hickory Island. I just wanted to make a real brief comment about Agenda Item 8A, the fishing amenities of the city enhancing them. I think it's a great idea. Really like to see the city have something like that available. Living out in Little Hickory Island, one of our biggest problems is the young adults that are trying to find someplace to fish, and it would be nice to be able to point them to a place where they're legally allowed to fish. So, I think, you know, it would be an investment in our youth and young adults. So, I think it would be a great idea. I just don't know where. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name is Kyle Moran. I first moved to Benita Springs in 1993, living on Southampton Drive in Councilman Fitzpatrick's district. And today, I spend most of my time at 27317 Feltz Avenue, sort of right on the precipice of Districts 2 and 5. And I spend most of my time down there pursuing a dream that many of us in this room share, not just revitalizing our downtown, but truly making Benita Springs a great cultural and community capital for our area here in southwest Florida. Oddly enough, if you really think about southwest Florida, the go-to gathering place in this whole area might currently be a grocery store. And as impressive as Cede Table is in North Naples, it is a former Albertson's. And frankly, I think our community and Benetians deserve a lot better. We deserve something that reflects the character and strength of that, of our community. And like the speaker before me, I'm happy to speak tonight in support of Councilman Purdon's Item 8A. As a number of you have mentioned, and particularly Councilman Corey, if there are great projects on the table to benefit our citizens, accelerating them is a no-brainer. For far too long, Benita has just been regarded as a pass-through to Naples, sometimes almost feeling like we're a forgotten stepchild compared to Naples. The reality is, we're something very unique, or something very powerful in our own right. With our beautiful beaches, which Mr. Purdon aims to make more accessible, I think that's a goal of all of us in this room, with our vibrant and walkable downtown, with our diverse neighborhoods, with our preserved eastern lands, we have every reason to believe that Benita is just as special, if not more so, than other neighborhoods. Certainly, our neighbor to the south. And the numbers tell that story. When I moved here in 1993, the population of Benita Springs, what is today the city of Benita Springs, is about 14,000 residents. And Naples at the time, the city of Naples, is about 20,000 residents. And since then, Benita has grown from 14,000 to 60,000 people nearly, while Naples has held steady around 20,000, sort of the result of billionaires buying and bulldozing bungalows in Naples. And in truth today, Benita has thousands of more millionaires than Naples, which, pretty jaw-dropping reality. So, absolutely, fiscal responsibility matters. And I know that that's a responsibility that all of you, you know, hold dear. But it's also important that our public amenities match the size, the character, and the momentum of our city. We're now the size of Sarasota. We're three times the size of the city of Naples. And it's time that we start thinking big, just like our size. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Megan Harris. I am the CEO of Benita Springs Estero Realtors. I'm here representing our 1,500 members. And I, too, am speaking in favor of Item 8A, the pier. Our association is in favor of moving forward with the idea of exploring, bringing a pier to the city of Benita Springs. You know, today, I spent my whole day in a broker class. And many times in that class today, they asked how many people are from Naples and how many are from Fort Myers. As the gentleman before me just spoke, Benita Springs is often underrepresented. And I believe that something like this could bring some great value to our city. So, on behalf of what we lovingly call "bear", we are in favor of the idea of moving forward with the study.
Thank you. Any other public comment on agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and proclamations. So, first up, or the only one, is the Benita Springs Soccer League. We had the Mayor's Cup a few weeks ago. And so, tonight, we wanted to invite the winning team, Juventud Independiente, to City Hall, so we can officially present the trophy. So, I can have everybody come up to the front, so we can get some pictures.
Congratulations. You guys did the work. Great job.
Yes, so this is the winning team, Juventud Independiente. Close enough.
Nice try, Michael.
Trying. And this year was the first year that they've had the Mayor's Cup since COVID. They had to kind of go on a hiatus. Oh, and Moy Lopez? He was actually, he played in the first Mayor's Cup, and he's still involved with the Soccer League. So, we wanted to congratulate him, too. Walter, would you like to say a word? Or one? One?
Good evening, Mayor and Board Members. Thank you very much. This is approved of the good job of the city of Benita Springs, supporting and doing a good job on programs where the sports and the recreational activities are 100% for the community. So, we have been playing the Mayor's Cup in 2006, and we call it Mayor's Cup, so we can have the mayor and the representatives into the fields, too. And they are beautiful facilities. Thank you for parks and recreations. They're keeping a good work on maintenance, the fields. And then they are beautiful, like the person who was talking about. Benita Springs is growing, and we need more recreational areas. And I think the pier is going to be a good reason, bringing more tourists. And then I just want to say thank you very much for your work, for the Board Members, and for the mayor. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hold on, a couple more pictures.
Mr. Mayor, which one's the Mayor's Cup?
Big one.
Outstanding. Soccer Stanley Cup.
Thank you.
Good MVP trophy, Mike.
That's my participation.
All right, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Any comments on consent agenda? All right, Mayor and Councilmember Items. Jesse, you're up.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, as you guys have seen, I just kind of want staff to kind of, this is actually kind of a throwback item. Council's well before us, back in like 16 and 17, back when I first started paying attention, but before I was involved, kind of had this thought about a fishing pier. It's kind of a salute back to, you know, kind of our origins and kind of just a cool public access scenario for fishermen and for the city alike. I've been kind of thinking about this a little bit. I've been thinking about this since I got re-elected, actually, but I didn't want to rush it. And then I started thinking about the fact of my political mortality is pending. We have term limits. I know it's coming. And watching Fort Myers Beach and watching Naples go through what they've been going through in real time with their piers, these are very long processes. So, I think this very first step of having the staff kind of look into, you know, dusting off that study, seeing like, you know, you see purposely, there's nothing on here about location, how we're going to pay for it. That's later down the road. This is kind of a, let's dust off that study. Let's look at what some options are. And, you know, I think looking at the top five piers in the state of Florida is a great starting point and things that we would want in there. And then at the end of the day, we have a landmark piece. If you think back, you know, 10 years ago, we didn't have our library. We didn't have a high school. And we were miles and miles away from the idea of a downtown. And we've come so far. And it's been great leadership from this board over the last 10 years, and it's been from the county as well. And it's been not only careful stewardship throughout the process, but there's been a lot of forethought. And knowing that the timetables for something like this are what they are, I think a pier could be a beautiful, beautiful accent to all of the work that we've done and really kind of top off Benita and just really leave our grandkids something very special. And I think we have a very unique opportunity to do that today. So, with that, I'd ask for your support.
Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea. I think we need to move ahead with it and see how, because like Jesse says, it is a long process, you know. Anything having to do with southwest Florida Water Management District is three to four years. So, let's get, let's get it started.
Right. And Nigel?
Yeah, Jesse, I apologize. I haven't had a chance to do a deep dive on this, but previous research that was done, did we have any areas, because I'm thinking, where could we actually put it? Either be at the end of Benita Beach Road or Lover's Key.
And again, I purposely didn't put any in here, but some just that were floated around at the time. The idea was done by docks at the time, right? There's also been discussion of off of, off of marker five, beach marker five, and also by where the Dog Beach is. And then last, most recently, is the thought that kind of down by Lover's Key, where they're putting in the bridge and that infrastructure, there's already a lot of parking there. Also then, you know, now you're looking at the potential of a county-state-city collab, also it doesn't cost as much, too, depending on where it's placed. There's also, you know, somebody pitched the thought of the backside of Coconut Road. So, I mean, there's options. I mean, you could, there's, there's at least five right there that I said is potential options, which is why I didn't put any in here. Because if you put one, people are going to get either, I don't want to feel like I promised anybody anything, and I don't want to get anybody worked up who doesn't want it, any, any specific spot, because that's so far down the road. So, conceptually, if we can get behind a pier, and then we can dust off the study and kind of see where it is, where, you know, where it is now in today's world compared to where it was, as far as the zoning and all the things that go into a study of where it could be and all of that stuff, you know, it's just kind of a step in that direction.
Well, with Chris Foley to support something like that.
Laura?
Matt, could, do you have any background on this, or would it be Nicole? Oh, she's getting up.
Yeah, I can have Nicole come and speak to the report that Jeff C. referenced back, I think it was 2018. Go ahead.
2016, actually. So, we actually hired previous councils, directed staff to hire Hans Wilson and Associates to do a water feasibility, water access feasibility study. They were focusing on Benita Beach. They were also looking at water access, not just fishing piers. We do have some conceptual plans for the area by Dog Beach. So, that was, the two biggest locations we were looking at at that time were Lover's Key and Dog Beach. We did have discussions with Lee County about the Dog Beach area. It wasn't a full-on pier. It was more a kayak-launch fishing platform, is what they called it. So, it wasn't a really large pier that went out into the Gulf. And again, we did have those discussions with Lee County at the time, with the former county manager, Roger DeJurele. They were, they liked the idea, but they did have New Pass Bridge slated for replacement. So, they were asking the city to kind of hold off on the project, because they weren't opposed to it. They actually thought it was a good idea to partner and have that area with restrooms and additional parking, and looking at TDC funds at the time. But again, they were, they were wanting us to hold off on looking further down that line until they had some more information on construction of New Pass. And then that's pretty much where we left it. And then we did look at other just water access areas, kayak launches, things like that. But in terms of the fishing platform area, that's kind of where it was left with the county, and it wasn't. If you do look in your CIP, you have, it says Dog Beach Park. That is what that is for, and it's in the way out years.
Good question for Nicole. Can we get a copy of that study?
You sure can.
Educate, educate ourselves?
I can, I can sure get that for you. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Do we have the direction?
Jesse, is your thoughts as more of a marquee destination type thing, like Naples Pier or Fort Myers Beach?
I think, I was thinking kind of, have you seen Delray Beaches? Google that. That's kind of a very pretty one. There's somebody, yeah, something kind of, you know, I, in my head, and this is, again, I don't want to bias the project, just like in my head, you know, a beautiful pier that, you know, is going to be picturesque, because we already have the most beautiful sunsets in the world. So, now you have this pier right over them. Maybe you have a restaurant at the end of it. I mean, obviously, I don't want the city to run the restaurant, so they'd probably be private-public of some kind. But at the end of the day, you know, so people could, could walk down there. They could have some drinks. They could watch sunset. It would be, it would be nicely lit, you know, maybe a bait shop at the front of the pier, so people could get, get material. But now you get all these people who are hanging out on the bridges, and you're trying to drive down. Now they have somewhere to go. And if we dovetail it with the right project, parking's already going in, you know, over by Lover's Key anyway. So, I mean, there's options for how we can deal with parking. But I think the solutions of getting them off and giving us simultaneously a destination spot is kind of my thought. But not really Naples, or not, I was thinking more like Delray Beaches, kind of something along those lines, something really, that will really stand out, which is kind of, when I said like the top five, like have to look at the top five or 10, and really examine what people have liked about them, what's iconic about them, so that we can just make one that's maybe a hybrid of all the best, and we have the best one here. You know what I mean? Take the best of the best and create something awesome.
And I would comment that some of our citizens will probably do a quick dive and point out to us how much the Naples Pier costs. And we can point right back and say, look at all the bells and whistles that they added to that. That's not necessarily going to be the cost you'd be looking at.
And they were doing it independently. I mean, depending, again, the location completely, you know, could depend us. But at a minimum, because the county on the beaches, we're looking at least splitting it with the county, right? If we do it at Lover's Key hypothetically, which is a state park, now you're talking three, three wallets instead of one. So, I mean, Collier was never really in that spot. It was always them on their own. So, I think no matter how you look at it, we're going to be in a better position than them, because at a minimum, we're going to have two wallets, hopefully, assuming, you know, the discussion goes well with the county. Assuming we have a study that leads us to have a discussion with the county, then we would have more wallets at the table to begin with.
We currently have a voice, I'm sorry, Jim, we've got a voice on TDC. Is it too early for me to test the waters with them and ask?
I would, honestly, in my head.
Got a meeting next week.
Strategically, I would wait, just only because, yeah.
That's it, Justin.
I would just like to get farther down the road, because I don't want anybody to come up with a reason why they have a better spend than us. Until we get it farther, it's more, hey, no, it's not just an idea. Here's actually what we're going to do. Now we want the money. Because if it's farther, they have enough time to take our legs out from under. It's not that other municipalities would do that.
Never happen in Lee County.
But to be safe, I like to keep it close, until we're farther.
Okay, anybody else? That direction enough, Matt?
Yeah, we'll get you the studies, and you can, you know, we can go from there.
Sounds good. All right, city attorney items. Why are we paying you?
It's good enough to hear from you.
What about, where are we at with kind of combining?
Oh, so we have, Mike Sheffield and I are working on coming back with a plan to look at the boards. There is, there was a new bill that passed during the sessions, Senate Bill 2, Senate Bill 250, or 180, it might be the new one, which is an extension of the prior local government restriction that we had within 100 miles landfall. Now it's a statewide prohibition. But the Attorney General's Office has issued some opinions. And so, I think we're going to be able to get through this if we want to move forward with the changes that we discussed, especially since I think on balance, we're going to be talking about reducing barriers. So, technically, in the spirit of the statute, I think we're going to be able to change some of those, those processes. With respect, I do have two other items that will probably, you'll probably see on your next agenda, which is going to be, we, I think we have a final agreement on the SOMAX consistency plan challenge. This was the, the project out, the 10 villas with dockage that got the challenge. We're just processing that. The settlement is really between the two parties, the neighboring challenger from Benita Bay. And then we will have an inter-local agreement on the next agenda with respect to opioid. Our opioid mitigation plan, as you recall, a couple of years ago, we got money from the national settlements. Lisa can tell you, it's thousands of dollars over 20 years. We're going to, we're going to chip our money.
You mean tens of thousands?
No.
Thousands.
So, we're going to, we're going to chip that money in with Lee County's implementation plan. And we had a coordinating call with them last week to make sure the money goes further.
That'll help the city with the administrative burden that the less than tens of thousands of dollars.
Will cover.
Yeah.
Yeah, and per the city's direction, we had, we reached out to LCSO and other groups locally to see if there was a program. And they, they roll up into the, into the county's Health and Human Services, so that, that's where we're going to spend it.
Sounds good. City manager items.
I just want to call up John Dolmer to talk about some future land use planning workshops that he's working on.
He's smiling.
Morning, afternoon, evening. So, going along with the workshops that you had discussed earlier this year, the land use workshop, currently we're looking at scheduling for August 6, which would be your, the same date as your first council meeting that month. We could start it sometime around 1, run it as long as we can, then you'll have your regular meeting that night. For that meeting, both Dr. Banyan and Mr. Theriak would be here in person for those to help guide that workshop. If there is a need for a second workshop, if we're not able to cover things as quickly, we could talk about the August 20 meeting, should we need a second date. And then if that's the case, we could push that meeting, your regularly scheduled city council meeting, back to the evening. And then again, start at 1, work it through the afternoon, and then have your regular council meeting that night. So, I'm not sure if, if we'll need to, but we have the possibility. Now, for the second one, everyone would be remote, Mr. Theriak and Dr. Banyan would be remote, but they would still be able to, to guide us from the screen, as they've done before. I don't know if there's any questions, but I had to bring my calendar up to make sure I got the right dates.
Sounds good. All right, that's it. Hurricane update, Steph?
I don't have much to update about the hurricanes. You know, we continue with the reimbursement processes from, really from Milton and Helene.
But officially, hurricane season has started.
Yes, there's a season.
Mm-hmm. And the governor hasn't announced the tax dates yet, the relief, you know, for hurricane.
All right, Mayor and Councilmember reports. Jim?
Yes, two things. This is, it's been a little bit in the past. I do want to recognize the folks from the DAR for their Memorial Day ceremony, which was held over at the Benita Springs Cemetery at Imperial and Benita Beach Road. They have quietly been honoring over 150 veterans from World War I, World War II, Korean War, Vietnam, each Memorial Day for the past several years, as well as doing all the reef, the reef laying. Also, next door at the Royal Lakes, Royal Palms Resort Park next door, two ladies were recognized, and I apologize for not having their names. They have been providing the quote perpetual care to those grave sites, for those that have fallen, as well as the prior citizens of Benita Springs. Secondly, in that same vein, I do want to recognize the efforts of the Veterans Advisory Board and the work on the Memorial Day ceremonies here in the city. And, and it was, it was a great day. And each year, it seems to get a little bit better. And you had interpretive dancing going on with the, in a very sullen and discreet way. So, thank you very much.
Did you participate in the interpretive dancing, Jim? Did you participate in the interpretive dancing, Jim?
I'm sorry?
Did you participate in the interpretive?
No, you would not want to see me interpreting.
Or in a tutu. So continuing with that vein, Jim said Memorial Day was, it was definitely memorable. And I, I think a lot of people were surprised to see an admiral move to tears twice, once because of the men that he lost in his command. And he was very transparent about those things happen. And then the fact that he was leaving so he could go up the next day and take his son to Annapolis where he was going to be on fighter pilot. But we were walking away after we were done and I don't have to write it down anymore. He was looking around and just saw how everything was presented. And this is a quote, you know, Bonita Springs is America. That's a, and it was just this genuine appreciation. We heard the same thing from our previous two speakers. Tuesday afternoon, I got a call from Washington from Brigadier General Roach, who wanted to remind me that he's definitely available to come down and speak. So I think the days of wondering if we'd ever get another flag officer and admiral, that's over, not a problem. They want to come here. They're talking to each other about our city. So, and to Bobby Hunter and the Veterans Advisory Board, again, they, they do such a great job of, and our Parks and Rec folks did a phenomenal job with making the park ready. It was perfect. It was even cooler than we thought. So Nicole, great job with your team. TDC, the good news, I think, for us is the fact that I talked to Representative Batana and the move to remove the individual TDCs and accumulated to the powers of Tallahassee. It's not going to get even to the Senate, so we'll keep our money here. And that's, I think, good news for us. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Chris?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Herc Rentals. They're a public company. They're based here in Bonita Springs. They just completed their acquisition of a major competitor. They'll now have over 600 locations for equipment rentals in the United States. They'll be the largest single rental supply company of equipment for all kinds of businesses, construction, movies, everything else you can imagine. It's a quiet company. You don't hear too much about them other than when you do ask for in-kind donations, they are the ones you go to if you want, need any equipment of any kind. So I just wanted to say congratulations to them and, and give them a nod of appreciation for all the work they're doing to expand their company and grow their employees.
Great news. Laura?
Good evening, everybody. This morning, I went to the State of the Region address up at Coconut Point and it was terrific because we had the partners who envisioned developing the only completely solar town in, in America. And of course, that is Sid Kitson and his son Tyler. And they were fabulous. They could take their, their gig on the road. They were so funny. And they gave a lot of information on how it developed and smart developing and sustainability. And then it followed right into Denise Carlin, who then talked about how the schools are changing and they're focusing on what the community needs. So they're doing construction courses and you're getting licensed and degrees in healthcare and culinary, you name it. They're just diversifying to practical. So no more women's studies, no more sociology at FTCU. And FTCU is maybe heading to Bad Park Ranch and they'll actually do infield studies. And so who knows what will be sparked by actually doing. Because, you know, you tell a story, maybe they remember. You show a story, maybe they recall. But if you do it, you get your hands dirty and you remember how to do it. Well, most of the time. So anyway, it was a great meeting, well attended, and that's good.
Thank you. Jesse?
I had a lot of positive feedback about our Memorial Day stuff, so good job to the committee, Nigel, and everybody else involved in that. And then as far as the legislative session goes, I was able to touch base with Senator John Martin and Rep. Adam Batana and they both seemed to feel confident that we are looking good. So unless something catches us, you know, off guard, which has happened, which has happened. But I talked to both of them and they both say we're good. So that looks to be good right now. So if something changes, you know, that things can always change. We thought we got to touch them before and then it got called back. So we'll see. But it seems to be good.
Thank you. Amy? Yeah, I also wanted to thank staff and the Veterans Advisory Committee. Did a great job on Memorial Day. Thank you, Nigel, for getting us great speakers.
The whole team.
And also, a few of us attended the ceremony at Bonita Springs Elementary for the demolition and building of the new school. And, you know, talked about the facade that we're going to get in replace of the old school. But other than that, I think I am good. So we will go to public comment on anything. All right, no public comment. So the only other thing I will bring up is upcoming meetings on June 18th. We are doing a city council budget workshop at 4:00 PM. And that day, we also moved the regular meeting from a morning meeting to evening meeting at 5:30 PM on June 18th.
18th is an evening meeting now?
Yes, yeah, we changed it to an evening meeting. So we'll have the workshop at 4:00 and then the meeting at 5:30. No, no morning meeting. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned.